We'll start in about one minute. I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown, Ohio City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. Clerk of Council, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mayor Slankka?
Here.
Mr. Lally?
Present.
Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is citizen comments. A professional presentation free of foul language is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answers, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record uninterrupted and have the floor. After the meeting, your comment cards will be given to the city manager and she will assign a member of staff to reply to you as appropriate. We have received one comment card this evening. I will prompt each speaker for the next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to call Jennifer Chen to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. If you do sit, make sure that you press the red button so that it says green, and then when you're complete, please press that again so that it's back to red. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residents' work address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence. Is the microphone on? Is the microphone on? The button, red to green?
It's red. It's green.
On your side, is it green? Please press that so that is green. Yes, there you go. And then when you're complete, please press it so it's red.
Okay. I'm here to defend myself against Mr. Lally's public accusation against me at the last council meeting. I had shared my observations and experiences with the city over the last few years, including that the city during and after Mr. Lally's administration violated federal and state regulations, the constitution, and city ordinances. I also shared that Mr. Lally had personally attacked me and my family. For example, he has directed physical violence at me. He also called my husband's employer and falsely accused him of misusing his position to file a citizens complaint with HUD about the city's misspending of CDBG funds. Immediately after my comments, Mr. Lally claimed, quote, "I absolutely categorically 100% deny every accusation that I had made," end quote. "If you want to accuse me of breaking the law, then you better have evidence of such because I have broken no laws and did not do any of the things that I said he did." Of course, I have evidence. This is a list of some of the evidence that I have proving everything I said. I have extra copies of that if anybody is interested. And I also emailed it. Mrs. Skank has it also, so it's a public record. I have witnesses. I have documents. And I have recordings, including Mr. Lally's call to my husband's employer, which he absolutely categorically 100% denies making.
Hi, Mayor Lally. My name is Paul Lally, and I am the city manager of the city of Middletown, Ohio. And it is Friday at 11:39, and if you could call me back, I'm going to give you my cellphone number. Calling in regards to your village administrator, Jung Hien Chen, who has evidently, on your guys' using his position as the village administrator there, filed a complaint against us with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on our use of CDBG funds. And I'm just curious as to why he would do this under the auspices of the village of Hebron. Now, his wife is a resident of Middletown, and she has filed it also. But I just find it a little concerning that a village administrator would file this to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as the village administrator for the village of Hebron. So that's what I'm calling about. If you could call me back, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
That recording is proof that you not only lied here, but you had the nerve to sit up there and lie, claim that I was the liar. For the record, HUD's correspondence makes it clear-
Sounds like a personal attack. Point of order.
We pause the time, please. Thank you. Mr. Ewing, would you please speak to this?
I think we could just finish up and move forward with the time remaining.
I think I have a right to defend myself against his accusations against-
I think the time was one minute, one second.
We go back to one minute, one second, please.
It was one minute and five seconds, I think.
He's not able to?
I can keep the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Said, "For the record, HUD's correspondence makes it clear that they knew it was a citizens complaint and that we were correct." And this is his permanent address. He just has to look far and wide to find some place that will hire an Asian man for a place of authority. And he has this application here for the city assistant city manager. A seat on council is a position of trust. How can this community trust their future to someone who lies to them so casually? What else have you lied about? All of this? That's for starters. And this. So go ahead and attack me again, if you dare, because I will come back and defend myself. And it's astonishing how afraid several of you are of people knowing the truth.
Thank you, Mrs. Chen. Would you please make sure that that button is turned off into red again? Thank you. This concludes our public participation. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with council member Lally, followed by council member Carter, and then to my right with council member West, followed by council member Horn. I will speak last. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, so I guess you didn't vote for me. It's leaving me hanging by my petard. That's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening, Middletown. No comments from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody got a chance to go out and vote today. It's a great right that we have in this, in this country to be able to do that. I'd also like to thank the city, city manager Combs. The city of Middletown donated 200 rees to rees across America for here in town, so that's a great thing. So thank you very much. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Can we go back to the slide about the citizen comments, please? Okay. So I have a problem because this has happened to me, and Mayor, you're the chairman of this meeting. I had Todd Moore come here and attack me, which, you know, sticks and stones still apply to me, and it seems like rules don't apply here. I had a, the same person lie under oath at a meeting. And I know I'm leaving, so I'm going to say what I want. But I would hope in the future, when they start mentioning names and start attacking, as it says right here, "Personal attacks on staff, council members, and other individuals will not be tolerated," that you actually do something, Mayor, that you stop someone. Yeah, I know, she contributed three times to your campaign. Yay, you're mayor. But it is to the point where rules don't apply, and it's getting absolutely ridiculous. We're adults here, and when people come here to speak their four minutes as citizens, speak your four minutes. If you have a problem with any of us, especially things that sounds like crimes, that sounds like someone should be talking to the chief or one of his detectives. Assault is a crime. She accused him of assault. Nothing's been had here, but she comes here and regurgitates for the third or fourth time, and nothing is done. I can't do anything because I'm not mayor. You're the chairman of this meeting. It's written right there. Personal attacks. You know, I'm Gen X, so you can say whatever you want. But the other generation, they get their feelings hurt real easy. They feel that you're attacking their space. So when you say their name and say something negative, they get all upset. Why is that? Well, because they shouldn't tolerate personal attacks, why should we? And we are continually receiving personal attacks here, and I don't understand that. I don't understand why we have this rule. If, if that's the case, they can come say what they want, like Mr. Moore came and said, "What do you want about me? You did nothing." She just said what she wants about Paul Lally. You did nothing. Why do we have the rule? Just to take it out, let them come say what they want for four minutes, and then as long as they don't, as long as they do not break what the, what the, what the Supreme Court has said, meaning that it is racial or it's causing a threat, they can say whatever they want up there for four minutes and just take that rule out. Because it is absolutely ridiculous that we have this rule here and citizens continue to attack individuals. They can say what they want about city council. I don't like what you voted here. I don't like what you did there. That's a council thing. But when they say your name, that is an attack, an absolute attack on that person who is volunteering their time and being paid 350 bucks a month to serve this city, to do their civic duty. And Mayor, you should say something or have them take this out. And if they want to personally attack us, go for it. But till then, that rule is here for a reason. You read it every time, and people keep coming up and name-calling one of us. It's different if they say city council. That's a total different subject. But when they say your name specifically, that is a personal attack. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. And I will go ahead and say something at this time. So this is something that I've had an interest in, this particular conversation. Mr. Ewing, are you able, because when we say we have rules, we do, and one of them is the First Amendment right. Mr. Ewing, could you speak to this, please? Are you able to speak to this?
Sorry. Madam Mayor, what I would suggest is, this is something that would be best for an attorney-client privilege discussion, and I'm happy to share that with the council through a communication. But I don't think in public session, getting into, you know, legal interpretations is as advisable.
Okay. Then that, maybe we can bring that up under new business at some point. So, thank you.
I have one thing to add, if I'm, if I'm a mayor.
Certainly.
And I'll just say this, and I think most residents would feel this way, but if there's another village administrator, another city manager, another city council member filing things at the state or accusing the city of Middletown of doing something illegal, I'm sorry, I would expect our city manager to make a call to that other village, to that other city and go, "Why? What's going on?" Village of Mentor has no business here. I don't see any issue with Councilman Lally contacting the Village of Mentor and going, "Curious. What's going on here? Why would your village administrator file something or accuse the city of something?" I mean, come on. Good Lord. It's ridiculous. You could come up here and play that voicemail 100 times. I don't see a problem with it. Because maybe the city, maybe under Councilman Lally, that would, that would earn my respect because when he was city manager, he had a damn backbone. It's a call of spade a spade. But I agree with Councilman Horn. The personal attacks are just ridiculous. Ridiculous. It's one thing, you know, people can say whatever, but when they come up to the, to the, to the dais, it, there's a rule there for a reason. If you want a circus, run a circus. But this isn't a circus. This is business. And that's all it is. When you come in here, it's business. Kind, respectful, understanding what facts are. But I will say this, I'll always support city leadership making a call to another, to another district, to another village, to another city to say, "Hey, what, what's going on here? What interest do you have in our CDBG funding?" I mean, it just makes sense to me. So I, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. West. To continue, I do have my council comments. It'll just take like about five minutes. So we do want to mention that our local elections are today, November 4th. Please be sure to get out and vote. Polls are open until 7:00 PM. The seat of Middletown has posted the Middletown Development Code update online survey, and it is live. This survey will allow the city to collect feedback on how the current development code works, any issues or concerns you may have, and your ideas for improvements. The survey should take about 10 to 15 minutes to complete. There are no right or wrong answers. Your present, your perspective is what matters most. This survey closes this coming Monday, November 10th, so please share with your Middletown friends and family and take the survey soon. Please visit cityofmiddletown.org to find the survey. Downtown Middletown, Inc. is hosting the first Friday event, Harvest Hop, this Friday, November 7th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in beautiful downtown Middletown at Governor's Square. It's a perfect evening to bundle up in your favorite sweater, admire the autumn leaves, judge a chili cook-off, and make some warm memories with friends and family while exploring unique local boutiques and enjoying seasonal treats. For more information and to learn about the local business specials that evening, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. The Performing Arts Academy, located at 4400 Lewis Street in Kitty Hawk Plaza, presents Giants in the Sky, a new children's musical. This magical story explores the world of giants who live above the clouds. With performances on November 7th, 8th, and 9th, please find out more by visiting their website at theperformingartsacademy.org. This Saturday, November 8th, is the Fourth Annual Turkey Trot and 5K in Middletown, hosted by CBI, our Community Building Institute. Gates open at 8:30 AM with the race beginning at 10:00 AM. Proceeds go to benefit the Cradle II Career Programs at CBI. To find out more and to register, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Right after the Turkey Trot this Saturday, November 8th, from noon until 6:00 PM, join DMI in beautiful and historic downtown for the Middletown Bourbon and Beer Festival. Turkey Trot participants will get 10% off their ticket. There are 12 different beverage stops and an additional six stops for hot and cold snacks like brats and beef jerky. And bring out your inner athlete with six competitive events to show off your skills like axe-throwing and barrel-rolling. There are raffles and prizes in vendors and cigar stations. For more information and to purchase tickets, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Later that night, this Saturday, November 8th, head over to the beautiful and historic Sorgh Opera House, located at 63 South Main Street downtown for the Rush Experience. The show starts at 8:00 PM. Parking is free and concessions are available. Take advantage of this chance to relive the magic of Rush, Rock's most celebrated Canadian band, in a performance that's as authentic as it is awe-inspiring. For more information and to purchase tickets, please visit sorghoperahouse.org. The next day, Sunday, November 9th, enjoy Painting Memories at New Ale's Brewing, locating at 1030 Manchester Avenue downtown. Join for a cozy afternoon of painting, creativity, and craft beer. You will paint a beautiful winter barn, and all supplies are included. These seats will go fast, so to find out more and buy tickets, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Next Thursday, November 13th, join in at Gravel Road Brewing Company, located at 916 First Avenue in downtown Middletown for Pints and Paint, a Bob Ross paint along. Tickets include one free beer. Please visit the Gravel Road Brewing Company Facebook page for information. Saturday, November 15th, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, is the very popular Holiday Mini Moos and Brews at New Ale's Brewing Company, located at 1030 Manchester Avenue. Adorable mini cows dressed up in reindeer antlers in Christmas attire will be ready for you to pet, brush, and snuggle. Tater Top Madness food truck will be there from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. For more information, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Later that evening, on Saturday, November 15th, continue your kickoff to the holiday season with A Celtic Christmas with On the Lash at our beautiful Sorgh Opera House. Built in 1891, the Sorgh offers a grand and intimate setting for this one-of-a-kind November performance that blends the warmth of the holidays with the vibrant energy of traditional Celtic music at one of Ohio's most beloved historic venues. For more information, please visit sorghoperahouse.org. Save the date for Beyond the Field, a free public event, and visit from our very own Middletown native and Major League Baseball slugger Kyle Schwaber. The date is Wednesday, November 18th. Doors open at 5:30 PM, and the location is Middletown High School. For more information, please visit cityofmiddletown.org. As a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year, so if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. Lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joy and satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight, and this concludes council comments. The next agenda item is city manager reports. City manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. So first, I would like to welcome down Janita Cummings with the CBI Rise program. Hi, of course.
Oh, I think we should keep that off. If you're going to use the, that mic, just make sure that you always put it as close as you can to you. Yeah, so that you can hear you. Can you hear her, Bill? Try again. Is it good?
Good. Okay. So I'll start first. These are the students with the CBI Middletown Rise Leadership Program. We want to start by saying good evening to everyone first.
Good evening.
All right. On the behalf of the Rise Leadership Academy program, our students, our families, and all of the mentors who are involved in these programs, we want to express our deepest gratitude to the mayor, the previous employee, one of your previous employees, Leisha Moreland with the Economic and Development Department, Jacob Scouse, and the entire Middletown City Building employees who are involved. This summer, you didn't just give our students internships. You offered them access, mentorship, and more direction and understanding about careers and interests. You not only invested in our students financially, but you gave our young people the chance to step in professional spaces, learning more skills, and seeing themselves as future leaders in this community. For many of them, this experience was eye-opening. They discovered the confidence they needed, purpose, and they understood that they belonged in rooms like this, and they can have careers right here in the city of Middletown. Your partnership does not just support the students, it strengthens our city. Because when we invest in our youth, we invest in the future workforce, the future homeowners, owners, the future leaders of this community. Our tomorrow as the city of Middletown, and tomorrow, when the city of Middletown begins to build and welcome more students in various careers to job shadow and complete two more weeks of interns with you again this semester for our students, we are so excited about this. Because you are continuing a legacy of opening doors, creating opportunities, and showing what it means to truly pour into the next generation. So we truly want to say to you, thank you for believing in our students, for believing in our mission, and for helping us build a better and brighter future for Middletown, one young person at a time. So we continue to look forward to your continual support and the impact that you're giving our future students. And so our students would like to thank you. And one student who is not here tonight, on her behalf, her name is Malon Thompson. She was with your marketing department, and she wanted for me to personally say thank you. She's having her grandparents tonight, so she couldn't be here. They will introduce their name, and they will be able to tell each one of you thank you and let you know which department they serve.
My name is Isis Wiltshire. I would like to thank the Community of Economics and Development Real Estate Department for offering me the ability to complete internship this summer. Thank you.
My name is Allison Mondragon Morales. I would like to thank the Community Economic and Development Small Business Department for offering me the ability to complete internship with you this summer.
My name is Jessica Cruz-Ailon, and I'm saying thank you to the Community Economic and Development Aviation Department for offering me the ability to complete internship with you this summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. They'd like to get a, they'd like to get a picture. Yeah. Should we stand behind? Yeah, well, if you guys- Yeah. Let's do that. Then we can get the flag if we wish. How do you want to do the picture? Yeah, they can come behind. Yeah. That'd be great. No, of course. Anybody else want to jump up there? Anybody else want to jump up there? We'll get Verlina in there and Marie.
Three, two, one.
Beautiful. Thank you. Ms. Combs.
Great. So, uh, the next item I wanted to bring up was the Downtown RFQ submission. So that, uh, closed yesterday, and we did receive one, uh, response from CMC Properties. So they will be presenting along with staff at the next city council meeting under City Manager Reports. Um, and then I wanted to bring up the town hall to city council. Um, I talked with staff, Jacob Schulte, and we would like to propose before the, the December 2nd city council meeting, maybe starting that early about four o'clock, and having the town hall. But, or, I mean, if that doesn't work, you could discuss other dates and get back to me, but that's just kind of our thought process this morning.
Okay. Um, is that something we can discuss right now? Should we wait for new business or unfinished business?
I mean, you can do it now if you'd like.
I think that's a good idea. Have it before the.
I agree.
December 2nd? Cause I was thinking maybe even the Saturday of, if possible, it's hard on a Saturday in, in the holiday seasons, but November 22nd, maybe in the morning? And then that would give some time before the next council meeting? Any thoughts there?
November 22nd?
It's a Saturday, and it's difficult during the holidays, which I understand. Okay. That way it could give them. I believe so.
So we have two noes.
Just to give some more time to the, cause I'm, I'm sorry. You can, you can, you can speak up. She said, what about the 23rd? That's a Sunday. Um, yeah, usually that's a really tough, weekends are tough anyway. But I was thinking like maybe something perhaps, but if it doesn't work, then you're saying four o'clock on December 2nd?
Yeah, why we were thinking that was it gives everyone enough time. You know, the interested group stakeholders time to look at the RFQ, hear the presentation at the next council meeting and be able to, you know, be prepared with thoughts, feedback at that town hall.
Okay. And do you think that hour and a half is, is sufficient?
I mean, we believe so.
Yep.
December the 4th?
The 2nd. At our December, first December meeting?
Start early around four o'clock.
Are you able to do that with work? Like, yeah. That works for everybody?
Yeah.
All right, that sounds good.
Great, thank you very much. And the last thing I have is I'd like to have Clayton Castle come down, our Communications Manager, and he would like to tell you about, um, a great event coming up.
Thank you, City Manager Combs. Um, the mayor kind of already stole my thunder, but I'm going to do my spiel anyway. Uh, good evening, Mayor Slampka, Vice Mayor West, and members of council. Doesn't seem that long ago that I was here before you all to announce the awesome rally that we had with Kayla Harrison, Olympic gold medalist and newly minted UFC champion. Uh, the rally was a huge success and exactly the type of celebration that I think Middletown wanted and deserved. Now, thanks to Vice President J.D. Vance, the City of Middletown is in a period of celebrating our success stories, not just as a local government, but as a people and as a community. We started a podcast that is solely focused on this. I've had the honor of telling stories for a variety of different media about where Middletown has been and where we are going in our success. From Paul J. Sorgh to Jerry Lucas to Kayla Harrison to the Vice President, there is no shortage of stories to tell. That's why I'm standing here before you again tonight. We are once again welcoming a Middletown legend for a celebration rally and conversation. As the mayor mentioned, Beyond the Field with Kyle Schwaber will be a night of celebration, community, and surprises. We will have appearances by a few people in this room, as well as by Mitty's Hall of Famer Kyle Schwaber. For those who don't know who Kyle is, he is a three-time Major League Baseball All-Star, a World Series Champion, a Silver Slugger Award winner, a two-time National League Home Run Leader, including this year with 56 home runs, the 2025 Major League Baseball Game All, or Major League Baseball All-Star Game Most Valuable Player, and the recent star of the hit ABC show Abbott Elementary. And as of two days ago, he is perhaps the most sought-after free agent this offseason after playing four seasons with Philadelphia Phillies. He has also played for the Boston Red Sox, Washington Nationals, and Chicago Cubs throughout his 10-year career. Now, we have a lot to talk about with Kyle when he sits down with me on the stage at Wade E. Miller Arena on the campus of Middletown High School at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 19th. Doors will open at 5:30 PM. I want to thank the other members of our planning team here at the city that is helping make this happen, Community Projects Coordinator Callie Fisher, Event Center Manager Angie Smith, and Grants and Special Projects Coordinator Tracy Jenkins. I also want to personally thank City Manager Ashley Combs. I approached Ashley about this, uh, small idea I had about a month ago, uh, to perhaps maybe possibly do another rally. Wasn't sure what her response was going to be, but she not only supported the idea, but offered to help with resources needed to pull it off. This couldn't have truly happened without her support. And finally, I want to thank Middletown City Schools for once again being gracious partners on another celebration. Specific thanks to Athletic Director Joe Campolongo, Assistant Athletic Director, Director Megan DeChambeau, Cheer Coach Kayla Wan Snyder, and Pep Band Director David Leeston. So that kind of gives you a little bit of insight to who else we're going to have at the rally. Um, I thank them for their work and dedication to this event. Thank you for the time this evening, and we will see you all on November 19th.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Castle from council? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Combs?
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda this evening is the Consent Agenda. While the Consent Agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the Consent Agenda this evening and move it to the Motion Agenda? Seeing none, we will continue. Mrs. Skank, please present the Consent Agenda.
Your consideration this evening, we have the confirmation of the conditional appointments of Christopher Lucas, Lacy Fuller, and Evan Snelling to the position of Corrections Officer in the Public Safety Department Division of Police, and to accept the resignation of Anthony Rossi from the Historic Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the Consent Agenda. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
The consent, um, sorry, the yeses have it and the motion passes. The Consent Agenda is approved. Our next item is the Motion Agenda. We have two items on the Motion Agenda this evening. Mrs. Skank, please present item A on the Motion Agenda.
To authorize a purchase of a 2026 Ford F-550 truck from Rush Truck Centers of Cincinnati, Ohio, in the amount of $118,392.92 for the Stormwater Division.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The 2011 F-450 with over 100,000 miles is due for replacement and will be sold on Gov. Deals. The new truck will serve as the primary response vehicle equipped with maintenance of water drains and curb and gutters, and will support heavy duty tools. The purchase is through Sourcewell Cooperative Program.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item A to authorize the purchase of a 2026 Ford F-550 truck in the amount of $118,392.92 for the Stormwater Division?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will continue. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item B on the Motion Agenda.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for the design of the Middletown Road Improvements Project Year 40 project in amount not to exceed $123,650.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The city has applied for OPWC grant funding to resurface and reconstruct various streets, including repairs to curbs, sidewalks, and handicap ramps. The project is set for construction between August 2026 and September 2027 with a contract not to exceed $123,650 with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, and the funding will come from the Capital Improvements Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item B to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, Inc. for design of the Middletown Road Improvements PY40 project in amount not to exceed $123,650?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slampka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it and the motion passes. This concludes our Motion Agenda. The next item on the agenda is Legislation. We have four items of legislation this evening. Law Director Mr. Alex Ewing, the Legislation, please.
Item number one, Ordinance Number O-2025-60, an ordinance authorizing the application of funds from the Warren County Career Center in order to defees and/or redeem bonds previously issued by the City of Middletown, Ohio for the acquisition and construction and of the community lear- uh, and of the Community Learning Center, as well as authorizing the termination or modification of certain transaction documents executed in conjunction with the issuance of such bonds, and authorizing actions related thereto and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I don't. Thank you.
Certainly. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yeses have it and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number two, Ordinance Number O-2025-61, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing purchases of asphalt by the city purchasing agent in 2026. Second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slampka?
Same thing, yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number three, Ordinance Number O-2025-62, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a two-year extension of a lease of certain real property to Mark Kikaris DBA Mark Stowing. First reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The city will amend the lease with Mark's towing for police towing services at $100 per tow. The agreement includes land leasing at 3,500 Terry Drive for towing operations and impound storage. Mark's towing won the bid for 24/7 towing services in 2020, serving about 1,100 tows annually. They have agreed for a one-year extension lease through 20, through December 21st, 2025, and a new two-year term from January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2027. They have been serving the city since 2013.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, we will proceed. Mr. Ewing, the last legislation item, please.
Item number four, Ordinance Number O-2025-63, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment of the contract with TriHealth Corporate Health, now known as Bethesda, Bethesda Healthcare Incorporated, for jail health care services. First reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The jail health care services contract was awarded to Bethesda in 2023 to provide cost-effective medical care, including nurses, nursing and secretarial support. The contract covers after-hours RN coverage, pharmacy and medical supply costs, ensuring compliance with OSHA standards and relevant laws. The two-year contract runs from January 1st, 2023, to May 31st, 2025, with a first renewal period for December 31st, 2025, and a second renewal through 2026, but has requested a rate increase for the second half of 2026. They will renew up to $204,880 for that year with no expected unforeseen medical cost per the agreement. Funds have been allocated in the 2026 budget for this expenditure.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, we will proceed, and this concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is Unfinished Business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
I think at the last meeting, I asked for a date for the removal of wood poles. They've done some fine, uh, asphalt around them.
I'm sorry.
Did have one citizen say that the grass looks very nice on Renaissance. Looks good.
So we're told by the end of the month, um, they did finish the interior paving of that project, so now it's just a matter of coming back and doing what's on Union and 122.
Not asking about asphalt, I'm asking about the poles.
Well, that's, that's the, well, right. That's causing us to not finish the asphalt.
Okay.
So, um, they've, they told us by the end of the month. Now, we're on them daily for it.
Okay.
Just, we're pushing them as hard as we can.
Because, okay. Um, cause I saw the steel poles there, so I'm assuming they just have to transfer.
Correct. And part of the issue is getting, uh, AT&amp;T and Spectrum to move their wires.
Okay.
Cause Duke's already done their work, and we're trying to push them as well.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions for Mr. Tedich? And is there any other unfinished business that anybody would like to bring up at this time? Nope. Hearing none, we will continue. That concludes our unfinished business.